Want to disturb it or put something ultra-modern, for instance, on top of a building of that nature. If there's no questions, I'll run through the comments real quick and then.
Just a quick question, the, so is that now the main entrance for visitors? For all, for security purposes?
Yes, that's a good question. I'll tell you what we went over with the school district, obviously, the school district can comment on their own protocols. But the intent would be this entrance while school is, let's say, at arrival in the mornings, would be open for students coming in. Once arrival time is done, let's say those first few minutes of the day, that gets locked down, and now this is a secure visitor entrance. So anybody coming to the school that's a visitor after those arrival and dismissal hours would have to go through this entrance.
Good.
So just to clarify, that would be open, full access in the morning, or would they still have security there to ensure that only students are coming in?
So they, the way that their protocols, they did to us was that they would make sure students are only coming in. I don't know if the door's gonna be manned before that. But it will be, at least the camera, and have entrances going into the building at that point after it's locked down during the day, so they know who's coming into the building.
Okay.
They do have an SRO, I know, station right here, right now, doing that same duty, so, yes.
That attachment to the building, they're gonna go through that and go into the building from there?
Correct, correct. And that's, so what you're looking for is the ground floor level, this is like half-sunken into the basement over here, first level. They would come into the building and then go into the main office and guidance would just flip-flop in the interior. So just the formal comments on that application were that the applicant should provide testimony regarding the intended purpose of the security. So I think we've covered that and the ADA accessibility. And then the site plan at this level, again, we are gonna have to comply with stormwater management, as everybody knows. I have to just state that, that when we go through that application, we will comply with that. And the accessible routes, we're gonna continue the accessible route from the parking lot that's located on the, on the side of the building by the Board of Education Office. Any questions on that one?
Okay, I just want to mark for the record then, we will mark as A three, there was a letter dated August 28th, from the, it looks like the planner, George Dupey, on behalf of the school submitting the drawing, which was previously marked as A one. And then we'll mark as PB one, Mr. Cole's letter dated September 23rd, 2024, which were the comments that were just reviewed.
Thank you. So this is the second application, site upgrades at Somerville High School. And then Exhibit A one, it's the site plan and the same date, August 7th.
And then here, why don't we see for our, Mark, Mike's letter dated September 23rd, 2024, for this application, PB one.
Thank you. So again, this is part of the referendum submission process. It's a schematic level DOE drawing, I understand Mr. Cole had to kind of use his, his every trick under the book to get comments on this one, but it's just schematic level. We will come back if you need at that point. We are required to undergo and comply with stormwater management. This, what we're calling a full depth reconstruction, and again, should a referendum pass, we can discuss whether that's leaving sub base and not having to go for the major development versus a million, a million overlay is not what we're intending to do here because the Department of Education deems something that's full depth eligible for state funding. And that's more of the referendum process, and I'll let the Board of Ed comment on that. But we submitted this as a full depth for that purpose, that the state will contribute up to forty percent debt service aid on a project of this nature, which is why you're seeing a full depth. What I'm pointing to here, which is note number two, this is the existing parking lot, this is the staff lot across the street from the high school, and this is on Davenport. Across the street is the student lot, and then adjacent to the building where the ramp comes out for the gym, for those who are familiar with the site, is a smaller parking lot for staff, and then it wraps around with a roadway connecting out to Orchard. The student lot is roughly one hundred and nine spaces right now with no ADA spaces in it. The staff lot is about one hundred and twenty-four spaces, two of which are wheelchair ADA spaces. And then the school site actually has two ADA spaces, and it's only twenty-two lots. I can tell you what we have to do, and again, when we go through a final parking plan, should a referendum pass, we would do a final parking plan, and we're obligated to comply with the number of ADA spaces, which we've already informed the Somerville Board of Ed we have to do. So they're aware of the impact and number of spaces, not the final number, but they're aware the number's gonna shift for ADA and number of spaces. So that was the first comment on the letter from Mr. Cole. The full depth, again, the full depth again was marking about the major development. I don't know if there's any questions on that. The stormwater and the basins that are existing, again, when we do a full application at that point, we are, we're gonna be required to comply with stormwater management as well as any soils conservation district measures, and we'll have to make that full submission to the soils district as well at that point. And then the last comment was about parking lot lighting. The lighting is out of the scope of this project, so the existing pole-mounted lighting that's on the wooden utility poles would remain in place. We're not increasing or decreasing, we're not touching it, it would stay as is right now. Any questions for those two? So I'll comment on that, you know, so we did a public release of the referendum already at the Board of Education level, at the, at the last Board of Education meeting. What I can tell you is that the district is looking at different configurations of what a question would look like. It's not finalized yet. What that means is this application may or may not happen with that building or not. So I don't know, I don't want to testify to that building yet. Obviously, for reasons, tonight they're not here, and I want the Board of Ed to be here for that one. The, we have to take into account number of spaces, obviously, in any occupancy in the building. Right now, we're looking at all options for the configuration, so it depends on what happens. This is within the same exact existing footprint, we're not looking to expand it. Correct, correct. For this application, correct. Correct, correct. It stands on its own, it's within the same, that's important, actually, for the Department of Education, when I said about the eligible projects. When the State Department of Education deems a project eligible, that means, in this case with parking, it's in the same footprint. That's why we're adhering to that same footprint. If we were to go outside of that footprint, the expense would be borne by the district or the taxpayer in the case of a referendum. But in this case, and all the numbers and tax impact and things like that are not my purview to get into here tonight, but they're, I know. But, yeah, exactly, so I'll just let the Board of Ed comment on those.
The referendum will not be on this year's ballot?
So the referendum is scheduled for March of 2025 right now. And we'll expect to have all of these costs that I'm mentioning from the state sometime hopefully in November.
But it is anticipated, once, I should say, once, if a referendum should pass, those components of the referendum, once the site plans are finalized, you would come back.
Yes, if you.
The Board of Ed would come back for a full courtesy review.
Yes, correct. So this satisfies the requirement for the Department of Education. Should you guys want that, we will absolutely extend that courtesy to you and go through that process.
And that's what's been done in the past, so I would, I would, I would think that they would come.
Yeah, I think we had, yeah, we had to do that before, so absolutely.
Yeah, Mayor, at the conclusion of this, we'll need a motion and a second for any comments or recommendations to make back to the Board of Ed, and that should certainly be one of them.
Anybody have anything else? I should open to the public, huh? All right, I'm gonna open up to the public for comments. Okay, hearing none, we'll close public. Comments from the board for a recommendation or non-recommendation?
Make a recommendation, that, motion to make a recommendation that the Board of Ed returns after referendum, if it passes, with full plans for a courtesy review.
Second.
We should do a roll call on this, right?
Is that the only recommendation?
Anything else?
Yep, roll call.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Acting Chair Warner?
Yes.
Acting Vice Chair Craska?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Addicks?
Yes.
Mr. Akin?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay, we are gonna move into, let's start with the fence ordinance, Mike. Fence ordinance?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman. Based on the meetings, sorry.
You're okay.
Based on the meeting we had in July, I came up with conditional use standards to address the corner lot fence. And subsequent to that, Cara has made some good comments about cleaning up the language and fine-tuning it. Basically, you had two things, one on the site triangle, and at that meeting, we had talked about raising it to forty-eight inch, and I provided documentation that, in my opinion, it shouldn't be higher than thirty-six inches because of the crown of the road and being able to see. And I provided some documentation from ASTO and some other governing standards about that. So on the site triangle, the language goes from fifty feet each way from the intersection, from the corner, to twenty-five feet. And I think, I, we had talked about forty-eight inches. I had recommended thirty-six inches, and I think Cara had reduced that down to thirty inches. So there is discussion on the height that you could see around. It's the motorist vehicles, forty-two inches, if you look at the reference documentation. The idea, so you could see a motorist coming down the street, or pedestrians. The pedestrians are typically higher than forty-two inches, so that's not the issue. But it's the car, it's a sports car, it's the average car. Then Cara had asked, added one comment about landscaping and pruning and stuff in the right of way to eliminate to over eight feet. And my comment back to her was, well, we have street trees plantings, they're typically, branches are lower than eight feet because they're not that, they're gonna have to grow. So I'd rather not say that because of the street trees, there's no way of getting street trees, in my opinion, to have branches over eight feet. It's just not, I don't see that happening. So we, the borough is very good with planting street trees, so I think we, I don't want to see a conflict with the ordinance on street trees. But did I cover that one on the corner lot?
Yeah, I think the only two comments I had was whether it should say on Section eleven, one seventeen I one, we have language saying above, no more than thirty inches in height above the center line of the street, opposite, or adjacent to, if we should add that additional language. And the other thought I had was, I find a lot of times with these street intersections, and we may actually even have them in our ordinance right now, showing a little diagram helps. Just to clear up any confusion. So that was, that was that one comment. And then the subsection two, I just said, we have no fence or shrubbery, and I think I just added planting or other visual obstruction. So I don't think that's a big deal, but I defer to Mike and the board as to what their thoughts are.
We can certainly clean up the language, get with Cara's comments, and come up with a clean version for the board for final review. And then the board likes it, it would be a recommendation to council to change the ordinance. But we can certainly make a final copy to include all comments and get it back to the board for their sign-off approval of it.
The last one. The last line, what that is saying is that the fees for this application would be no different than anybody, anybody applying for a fence on their property other than the zoning permit.
Yeah, that's when, that's when the conditional uses on the fences.
Yeah.
The site triangle basically says you can't put these structures in that area, there's no, I guess technically you could say would be a zoning permit, it'd be a denial if you wanted to put a, a structure within that twenty-five, twenty-five. But typically, Mayor, this doesn't come up from a zoning permit application. It's usually a complaint issue they can't see, and enforcement goes out there and says, cut the shrubbery down or eliminate the obstacle or the obstruction. So I don't see this as being a application for like a zoning officer to review. The corner lot fences, now, that's a different story. That's what we're gonna do next, and that's where the conditional uses. And Cara has comments on that too, about dishepparding. It's a good segue into the next topic, if we want to discuss that now.
Yeah, might as well.
That's the one where we have corner lots, and the concern was that you're getting penalized twice on the corner lot, being you have the frontage or the street address, and you have the other frontage, which those property owners have a legitimate argument that there's not privacy because you're, you're reduced to four-foot fence with sixty percent opening on two sides of your property. So the, the idea on this was to make it a conditional use, which does two things. It allows the planning board to review things that normally the planning board can't review because one and two families or site plan exempt typically go to the Board of Adjustment. So a conditional use will allow the board to review these applications. And because of the nature, and there is, and Cara pointed out in several comments, one of them is like the good side's facing out, it's subjective. I agree it's subjective. And to handle that, I'm saying have the planning board review it, not the zoning officer. So the concept was that the A or B would review these and make a recommendation similar to what they do right now in the SID. It would be a recommendation.
So the acronym, ARB is the Architectural Review Board?
Right.
Which is a subcommittee out of this body?
Subcommittee out, and it was discussion that the SID members all had to live within the borough. Right now, that's the case, but Bernie brought up that, make that caveat. So that caveat is in there. And then there's some mechanics. In the past, the ARBs makes a recommendation, the planning board has to approve it because I don't, in my opinion, the ARB can't approve it because they can't usurp the authority, in my opinion.
Yep.
So that was the thought, not reinventing the wheel. So you would have the A or B review this and make a recommendation, this complies with the conditions of the conditional use or no, it doesn't. If it doesn't comply, it's still go to the planning board to confirm that, and then it would be a mechanism to go to the Board of Adjustment because it would be a D four or D three. It's a conditional use variance.
D three.
D three. If the board, the planning board says it doesn't comply with the conditions of conditional use, then it has to go to the Board of Adjustment. And what the mayor brought up, okay, what's the fees in all this? The idea was that you would not be penalized for going to Board of Adjustment. You still have to do the noticing on all this, but the idea was that you, the thirty-five dollars would be the zoning permit, the ARB would review it, either say, we think this complies, and the planning board would then have the ARB's comments with, with the application, or the ARB would say, we don't think it complies. The planning board would still see it and say, yes, this doesn't comply. And then that applicant would have to go to the Board of Adjustment for the variance, but there wouldn't be additional application fees, is what the mayor came up. It would be handled under the same fee structure to handle this in that nature.
So the fee will allow them to do all different avenues without any extra cost. It's an initial fee and that's it.
Right. And there's, well, there's a escrow in, I, I understand what the board's getting at. There's always the issue of initial escrow to review it. But my experience has been, this is only a couple, every four or five years, so I'm willing to eat my review time to get to what the mayor wants. Mayor wants, and I understand this.
Equal treatment.
Even, equal treatment. But if it's going to go to the Board of Adjustment, the penalty has always been the application fees, the escrow, the higher heightened everything. So if you make the application fees blanket, what's the missing link would be my review fees or Cara's review fees, and that's, I can work with that, with both boards on this issue, but yes. So then you have the conditions, which is the setbacks, going back to what these conditional uses, which Cara had comments on.
But before we get to that, I just want to kind of discuss the procedural aspect of going ARB Planning Board and then Planning Board, Board of Adjustment if necessary. Was it contemplated that there would, this would be a noticed hearing before the Planning Board after the ARB recommendation? Because typically, let's just say we weren't having, let's say you had a typical conditional use, we weren't talking about fences. We just had a use that was deemed by your ordinance to be a conditional use. The application, if the applicant felt that it met all of its conditions, would come to the Planning Board, they would show you it met all the conditions, it would still be a noticed hearing, and then you would make that determination. If you found it didn't, same procedure is what Mike's recommending, they'd have to go to the zoning board. But that would be a noticed hearing, so just trying to.
I don't, I didn't perceive it as a noticed hearing. What I perceived it as, the, the, it immediately goes to the ARB for review. If the ARB says, you know, if they tickle it and make it work, and, and the homeowner is satisfied with that, it appears as a line item on our agenda, and we move forward. Because they've interpreted, and then ultimately, the Planning Board has interpreted that it's met the conditional use.
Okay, we can, we could tighten that up a little bit to make that kind of separate.
Again, it's, it's, we need parity for homeowners who live on a corner versus homeowners who don't live on a corner who want to put up a fence.
Yep.
And we can't treat them differently.
So I know we just discussed noticing, but let's just say the ARB says it's not something that should be recommended, and it comes here. They should be, a resident and applicant should have an opportunity to come speak before us.
Absolutely.
Well, correct, okay, so it's not just a matter of it coming to us, and they have to just wait in the background, okay?
No, it's an application that the, the Planning Board's gonna have to act either affirmative or negatively on this use, regardless of what the ARB says, in my opinion.
Okay.
ARB approves it, Planning Board could say, I don't think this meets the conditions, and then the Planning Board would make a ruling, vote on this. If it was, it doesn't meet the condition, then it would be going, the applicant would have to go to the Board of Adjustment because it wouldn't meet the conditions, regardless of what the ARB said.
So the other, other thing that I have a concern about is I just want to make sure that there is, we're on the same page as what the ARB has been doing. I know there's been some ARB reviews. I haven't seen them here. So we are relying on this as an ARB review, and then we get that information.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that that procedure is still being followed currently before we hang our hat on this new, on this new ordinance.
My understanding is the ARB meets ad hoc, has applications come in, and there's one member of the Board of Adjustment that chimes in, a member of the Planning Board and a member of the DSA. They all chime in via email or they meet and make their recommendations, and that's, it's ad hoc. It's not, it used to be back ten years ago, there was eleven minute.
No, but after that, it's supposed to be coming here for official, and I have not seen that. I know for a fact, we've had, I think, two or three recently, and they have not. So I just want to make sure that that part of the procedure is getting buttoned up and that everything is still coming here so that we are not in violation of them trying to override the Planning Board's authority.
And what I would, what I would also suggest is that we amend the ARB, because if we have Planning Board, Zoning Board, DSA, we should have a resident as well.
It's supposed to have a, and it does, actually, technically, I'm sorry, there is a resident on the board currently.
Yeah, the, the idea was the DSA member was a resident, Mayor. That was the idea. That's why it said the DSA member had to be a resident.
Yes.
It was in the language.
All right, that's good, good.
And then you can see the conditions, and Cara had some good comments on the conditions. And if you want to go through them all, I like to clean it all up, to get the language, but it's the flexibility that we talked about, about the setbacks and the height and the.
Question on that. So having a DSA that's also resident, aren't there, doesn't that same person have kind of different, looking through different lenses, right? A DSA has a different lens they look through than a resident that's not involved with DSA. So it makes sense to put a fourth person on it. I know that creates two and two for, that might be an issue with voting and making decisions, but I would say you still need a resident.
I have no problem bringing a resident on, and I have no problem with two versus two, because it ultimately has to come here. And if it's split, we still have to make a decision.
Correct. And I think we should look at the ARB regs, because for some reason, I'm remembering that since I've been here, we did do an amendment to the ARB procedure. I just don't offhand recall exactly what that was. So let's take a look, and let's make sure that any change we made before doesn't impact what we're trying to do here, to Lisa's point, to Chairwoman's point.
Yeah, so maybe we put that on the agenda.
How about we do it the ninth? Yes, we have, yes. I think it definitely needs to get put on for.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll look at that too.
And then if you, if you look, and Cara had some good comments to clean this up, about, I had language that the side of the lot, it's not the address. Cara cleaned it up. So you see the conditions on the different flexibility that the property owner has and that others, the other side of the corner lot, front-facing. I would like to get with Cara, and to meet with Cara and clean it all up. But the board has the idea, the idea is exactly what we talked about in the last meeting. It's basically allowing a lot of different ways, avenues of addressing, the concern being privacy for not having two small fences on two sides of your property. That's, that was the concern. So the board likes, I'd like to clean this up with Cara and get you a clean copy with all our comments done, and then you can bleed all over it, or tweak that, you know.
I think we're on the right path.
I think we're doing it right. I mean, I think. I think it's on the path. And then we're gonna have to amend the fee schedule or to address this, or define it, and we can cert, once we have the language right, I can, we can go through and make sure we picked up everything in the ARB on making sure that the fee schedule and the ordinance reflects.
Right.
So the things change, it's, it's clear that this is the process, as the mayor had said.
And I definitely like Cara's idea of the visual. I think that, especially because this is meant for residents to be able to understand.
Yeah.
I know we all understand it, but we're the ones that have been looking at stuff like this for quite a bit, so.
And I think Mike had found a couple.
They're in here already.
Yeah.
Those are good set.
Yep, exactly. I think that'll be helpful.
They're generic enough, they just.
They're generic.
Where the measurement comes from and why.
And it helps the ARB too.
Yes.
Yeah, so it kind of helps everybody along the way.
We could have this all for the ninth, for the next meeting, do we think?
We could try.
Yeah.
Just, I just don't want to delay too much longer before we get to the council.
Yeah, because it's got to come up to us, and then we have to amend the ordinance, so that takes time as well.
Yeah.
We'll work on it, we'll get you something. We want to make sure you have enough time also to take a look at it.
And we'll, we'll look at what the agenda for the ninth looks like to make sure.
And the approach overall, if you look at land use ordinances, the approach is to try to get conditional uses, because that would empower the Planning Board more. We have issues where the board doesn't have jurisdiction or certain things. If the board wants jurisdiction, the conditional use would allow the board more, more flexibility in matters that right now, like, you guys don't review. That's, I'm just telling you, that's the overall theme on how to address. Because I know that we have other ordinances coming up or things that the, that the board wants to look at. I'm just saying that my thinking is to try to approach some of these with conditional uses, just throwing it out.
All right. Anything else? Anybody have anything else on that? All right. So that brings us to, oh, do we, we don't need to do any action on that, right? Because we're just reviewing and, okay.
Nope.
So the next one is gonna be the crosswalk. I am gonna have Mayor Gallagher give us a little bit more information on this because you saw this way before any of us saw it.
Yeah, well, apparently, this has been floating around since twenty-two, before, before I came back. DOT is looking to put in a signaled crosswalk on West End Avenue, right, right near the entrance exit of the Immaculate Conception School driveway. So if you, if you know that driveway right now, the crosswalk, let me back up a second. There, between Mid-Au and Mountain, there are no crosswalks. That's an extremely long section to go without having a crosswalk. Especially with the school, yeah. And, and seniors, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a problem. So apparently, DOT has crafted a plan to put in a mid-block crosswalk, which one already exists, which is located directly between the two entrance and exit driveways of Immaculate Conception School, which is not a great spot for it, right between it. So DOT, I think, is getting ready to pull the trigger on, on moving on this and installing a revised mid-block crosswalk along with signalization, button-activated signalization. So they had sent this a while back. It came across my desk again. And they are looking for the council to pass a resolution in support of this. It's a state highway. I think it's probably one of those that it's more of a courtesy review, because it is a state highway, and, and they obviously have jurisdiction over the state highway. They can do what they want, but I give them credit for, for approaching us. So that's kind of the mix of it. So if you take a look at what they have here, it looks like they're moving the crosswalk a little bit west, so it's west of the exit driveway, which I think is a good thing. It gets it out of that flow of vehicular traffic. I did send this over to the Mont Senior so he could have a look at it, along with his, his, his staff. I haven't heard back from them yet. But I thought it most appropriate for the, this, this body to have a crack at looking at it to make sure that it comply, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say comply, that it fits with what we think is a, is a safe overall operation. that it fits with what we think is a, is a safe overall operation from our perspective, because we're the, we're the feet on the ground. This is designed by engineers in an office. So, Mike, anything to add to that?
If the, if the board likes this, I... If the board likes or agrees with endorsement on the DOT crosswalks, the only caveat, I would say, is see if the crosswalk can incorporate the, the humps that the rescue, the OEM, fire guys have approved, which is the small detail. This is what's being done on residential streets, when there's this traffic calming, speed, hump required. That's, that's the detail that has been approved by the Board of Engineers.
Yeah, on a state highway?
I know, they're gonna have to do their own thing, I know, I know.
It's a great thought.
I know it's pie in the sky, but...
So, I'm sorry. So, the only thing that I see, though, is this is actually two different locations?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, the other location is between Division and Union?
Union and Maple.
Maple, I'm sorry, yeah, but I was looking at the top streets, not the, well, whatever.
Existing crosswalk there.
Yeah.
So, they're looking to just improve that in site visibility?
And signalization.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the signage, I think the signage is proposed.
Yeah.
All those, those green signs and pedestrian signs, I don't think they're, you see, they, they're giving warnings ahead, I don't think that currently exists, those warnings.
But, is there an actual crosswalk there?
Yes.
There is?
Yes, yes.
We have one there.
We have one there.
Okay.
It's right by the alley that cuts back.
Okay, then, yes.
That is it, I believe.
Correct.
The alley comes out...
It would have to be based on here, yeah, you're right.
And that's where this is, right?
Yes.
Yep.
There, they're adding signage and lighting.
Is this gonna be like the ones in Princeton on Witherspoon? Have you been down there lately? They did... Well, the reason why I ask is because I was down there last week, and they did, they did the entire Witherspoon from 206 all the way to Nassau Street. And they did traffic calming, bumped out sidewalks, and they have small humps, not...
Speed tables, yeah.
It's exactly what it's called, right.
Yeah.
That's annoying.
Yeah.
Nobody wants that, but it's something that rises and falls, it's not outrageous.
Right.
Plus, with the 25 miles an hour, anyway.
Should be.
Right. So, what I, well, what I'm really looking for is the Planning Board to, um, just...
Make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation to council that you agree with these improvements, and then the council then can, can draft a resolution of support to the DOT, referencing the Planning Board's approval as well.
So, do we have a motion?
Traffic, traffic signal lights.
What's that?
Can we trade them for traffic signal lights in certain parts of town?
That's a different battle.
Highly annoying.
That's a different battle.
I'll make a motion to make a recommendation to council, to write a letter of recommendation in support of the two new crossing improvements.
I'll second that.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Acting Chair Warner?
Yes.
Acting Vice Chair Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Addicks?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Yeah.
Better late than never. All right, I have no comments, why don't I open, open this up to the public for comments, anything? Come on up, please state your name and address for the record.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I just have a real quick comment.
Name and address, please, sir.
Rich O'Neil, I gotta look up later, 124 West Cliff Street.
Thank you.
You're talking about the Architectural Review Board, you have two members of the, of the public, citizens of town on that, because to be, be on the Board of Adjustment, be on the Planning Board, you live in town. So, it automatically takes care of that problem. That's it.
Thank you. Turn your mic on, Larry. Thank you.
Uh, Rich, what I was gonna ask you is, it seems like the intent of having a public person would be somebody who's not official, who's not a Planning Board member, who's not already a Board of Adjustment member.
I know exactly what you're saying, good luck finding one.
We got plenty of people around town who just love to volunteer and do stuff for free, what are you talking about? Come out to night meetings, night meetings, watching how's? Am I wrong?
No, you're absolutely right.
We'll find them.
Okay, anybody else from the public? All right, we'll close public session. Before we do end, I just want to do thank Jenna, today is her last day.
No, it's not. Oh. I'm in denial.
I was like, wait a minute, what happened?
No one wants to leave, particularly me.
Yes. But, thank you for everything while you've been on the board, good luck in your new endeavors, and we will miss you, so thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
All right, I will take a motion to close out.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?